So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our board meeting committee of the who's tonight, October 17th, 2022. We're going to call this meeting to order. First thing we're going to do is we're going to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Mr. Cuff.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Tong?
Present.
Ms. Ivory?
Present.
Ms. Hopkins?
Here.
Ms. Cook Henry?
Present.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Haath?
Present.
And Mr. Waidersaction and Ms. Boykins.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, there are no... Oh, thank you, Mr. Cuff. Uh, there are no special presentations for tonight. Uh, motions for action, there are no motions for action tonight. So, we're going to go right into, uh, the review of our proposed agenda for business meeting for October 24th, 2022. All right. So, we're going to go right into our committee agenda, uh, for our committee, community relations, uh, read by Ms. Duella Richardson, our chair.
Good evening, Community Relations Committee Agenda. A1 would be American Education Week from November the 14th through the 18th, 2022. There would be a motion to approve that at the business meeting. A2 is your personalized learning community transfer window. A3, young men and women in charge program. A4, the Pennwood High School is hosting a free application for federal student aid form completion night, so there will be information about student aid, excuse me. A5, young men and women in charge for their 17th Annual College and Career Expo. And there will be information topics from colleges and university representatives. So, that's complete stuff.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Richardson. Uh, next we will have our community, uh, I'm sorry, our education committee agenda read by Ms. Valerie Cook Henry, our chair.
Our education committee will be presenting be one expulsion waiver agreements between two students, um, and there will be a motion to approve the terms of the expulsion waiver agreement negotiated between the William Penn School District and the parent of students 102-4204-80422 and 102-41468662 as indicated above. And then the B2 approval of the future-ready comprehensive plan, and it would be, the motion will be to approve the A title-one future-ready comprehensive plan as submitted by the eight elementary schools in the William Penn School District.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from our personnel committee agenda, uh, read by Ms. Wadia Ivey, our chair. Ms. Ivory, you're... Ms. Ivory, you're very... Sorry to interrupt you, but you're very low.
Okay.
You're very low. Yeah, that's better.
That's better, okay. All right, the superintendent recommends the following personnel actions. See one retirement, Maria Mahalik, uh, grade-five teacher at Colwin, effective 1/3/2023. Uh, Ms. Mahalik has been with the district since 10/4/2021, and we wish her well in her next future endeavors. See two resignations. See three appointment. See four changes in assignment. See five leave of absence. See six mentors. See seven miscellaneous appointment. Eight tenure awards. See nine salary track changes. See 10 miscellaneous personnel items. And see 11 modifications to previously approved items. And that approved kind of forward.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? I forgot what I said earlier, nobody? Yes. Yes, go ahead, Jen.
What is the supplemental, um, for men on mission?
You said what is the...
Wait, what is the supplemental?
Yeah, what is the...
Supplemental for men on mission, yes. That's for individuals to help lead and provide some oversight and administration to, uh, the men who will be supporting us this year.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
You also have to ask the same thing. You want me to answer?
No, you can.
Or you...
Okay.
Okay. So, just the question, uh, we had a question for...
Page 12.
Page 12, with regard to Mr. Darby. So, this is for, is Pennwood High Grade Academy Department Head Guidance and then also at Green Avenue?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so...
The two different salaries?
Yep.
Yeah, because there are two...
Separate supplemental activities outlined in the contract. There's units associated with, uh, High Grade Academy formerly Cypress, and then units associated with the high school.
Yes, two different locations, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. That's the, that's the reason why it's two different salaries.
Why don't you just say the...
Thank you. Those are all the questions we have at this time. Now, we're going to go to our property committee agenda read by Mr. Tong, um, our chair for pro- for property.
Thank you. We have D1, additional classrooms at elementary schools. Based on recent demographic studies and live birth report, the administration recommends construction, uh, recommends constructing additional classrooms as follows. Four additional classrooms at East Lansdowne, eight additional classrooms at Bell Avenue, and two additional classrooms at an elementary school in Darby to be determined. Motion is to approve the construction of additional classrooms at elementary schools as indicated above. And D2s, cost estimates for the construction of additional classrooms at elementary schools. The administration recommends approval for representatives from KCBA architects to develop cost estimates for the construction of additional classrooms as follows. Four additional classrooms at East Lansdowne, eight additional classrooms at Bell Avenue, two additional classrooms at an elementary school in Darby to be determined. And the motion is to authorize representatives from KCBA architects to develop cost estimates for the construction of additional classrooms as indicated above. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tong. Are there any questions or comments at this time with our property committee agenda?
I do, Ms. Boykins. I just wanted to, um, just clarify for my own, this is for my own brain. It says the administration recommends on both D1 and D2. Is this the administration recommending? Because I thought in, um, the meeting, I thought the, the committee was recommending.
So, the administration recommended it, the committee pushed it forward.
Okay, Ms. Ri- Ms. Richardson?
Will the cost information be supplied to us by the next, by Monday, or...
No, ma'am.
That's farther.
It will not be by the time, by Monday.
So, that's what my, uh, that's the comment that I have on it. It's like, we don't know how much this is going to cost, and we also don't have... So, we already know that we're negative 5.7, right? Or, I mean, a little under, I'm sorry, let's say four, four. So, we're negative four, or a little bit over that. And then we don't know what the cost is going to be to add these additions at this time. So, the issue that I have is that because we don't know the cost, because we know that we are waiting for grant money to come through and everything of that nature. We don't know how much it will be. Wouldn't it be like, shouldn't we wait? Wouldn't it be a little irresponsible for us to add something? Not saying that we haven't talked about this, we've already talked about it, but I'm saying, shouldn't we wait to see how, how much we're dealing with first before we say, okay? Like, for instance, because how I'm looking at D2 is that we're giving them the go-ahead to just move forward. So, my question to the board directs is like, shouldn't we just wait just to see how much we're actually, how much this is going to cost, and then how much money we really have to play with? That's just what I wanted to discuss tonight.
Isn't there an initial cost estimate for East Lansdowne?
I think that's the only one we do have.
Right. And the other, the other ones are two, three years down the pipeline, so, uh, it's easier to address those at some point in terms of the cost analysis. But you had the basic cost analysis in the, the spring, the summer from, uh, the initial proposal, where it was an à la carte item before the study was done.
But whether that, was that money was from when we got the missed quote?
Yes, and that's what, that's why they're asking.
We need to find out what the new quote is.
That's why...
Okay.
So, when he gave us the information, the information he gave us was incorrect. Then we got the correct information from the vendor that we decided to go with. The estimates that we had prior were from KCBA, and what we're trying to do is get new estimates. So, that's what that is about, getting the new, the new cost estimates. But originally, yes, he, Bill's right, we did receive some estimates, but I can't say that they're absolutely correct. But that's why we're asking for them to do it again, to give us some...
And are we asking KCBA to do it again with the history of not having accurate information? That's a question that I have. So, my concerns are for not having the, uh, financial information here for what it costs. Additionally, with D2, that are we comfortable with, um, having that experience of being that far off with those numbers before? For the, um, estimate of projects?
So, as, to respond to that, as per, um, our updates at the last property meeting, KCBA has shared that East Lansdowne and Evans projected costs are coming in on target. So, as far as we know, they are projecting that the estimates would probably be close.
From what they...
You said East Lansdowne and Evans?
From what they originally gave us.
Correct.
Okay. So, in that, and what was the number on that? Seven? Was it seven? But I don't want to assume. What was it?
I believe it was seven for East Lansdowne.
Yeah.
Currently for the project that is, um, on the board, on the books now.
Okay.
And would be 11 if we expanded for the, for additional classroom.
So, two things that I'm, okay, like, the two things that I'm hearing is the uncomfortability with KCBA because they made a mistake before, but I want to clarify with KCBA. KCBA has done some work for us previously. I want to say this, there was another vendor that gave the numbers that to KCBA, and KCBA went with those numbers. What I feel uncomfortable is about, you know, he's a project manager, he should have double-checked those numbers. So, now moving forward, okay, we're asking him to do more work for us, and people are questioning, are those numbers going to be accurate because of the previous issues that we had with him? So, I think that's an honest assumption people may have in their mind about his, his, the, the type of, uh, I guess, estimates he may give. Um, the, the thing that concerns me the most is us saying, I'm okay with them doing the estimate now, I'm not against them doing the estimate, but what I am concerned about is us saying for them, for D1, for, to move forward when we don't know how much money we're playing with yet. So, that's what I'm concerned about.
Normally, if all three of these items, East Lansdowne, Bell, and the additional classrooms to be determined in Darby were all three, four years down the construction schedule, that adds more validity to that argument. The fact that East Lansdowne is slated to go in to bid itself, okay? And to delay that would essentially be, uh, upsetting the construction schedule of the classrooms. That's where you, uh, run into that little bit of, I guess, I'd say the word trust, but that the, if the initial numbers for the HVAC and the, uh, ADA systems are scheduled to be in compliance with the original estimate, then the only thing that's left out there is the construction schedule itself for the classrooms. So, that's the, I guess, the rub.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Um, are SPDs there online? Could you, you, you can speak also? I hope you're unmuted.
Hi, yeah, it's Wadia. Um, I'm going to continue to enforce, my biggest concern is our transparency with this. We did a, a district-wide, um, notification of what our plans were with this improvement plan, and our improvement plan went over all of these additions and things like that, but our final discussion was that we were going to focus on ADA compliance and HVAC. And my concern is at the last hour, we're adding in the classrooms, whether they're three years down the line or one year down the line. We've raised taxes, we have no evidence of what the costs are going to be, and now we're saying we're going to jump and add it to the, um, to the plan, and we're only, we're handpicking part of the plan, because Dr. B. Coates has reinforced multiple times, we also need to do the high school, we also need to do the middle school so we can make those transitions. And my concern is that it's not a thought-out plan, um, it seems very last hour. Um, and I think if we're going to present this to our community and our residents, it should have a plan behind it to where we can say what the timeline is, because if we don't know this, why is it on the agenda? So, that's my concern. That's it.
Um, if we do not, um, the data came back, uh, that we need four additional classrooms in East Lansdowne. If we do not add them now, um, chances are the elevator will be put in the incorrect place, uh, because it was moved inside the building when we weren't doing classroom. And originally, when we saw plans this summer, it was outside the building enveloped by the four classrooms.
I'm sorry, Jen, to interrupt you, we, your, your voice is muffled. Um, can you speak a little bit louder?
All right, so, um, if we do not approve the addition, we, these classroom recommendations are being made based on data supplied to us by the Montgomery Group, uh, with a study that this board asked for, is make sure that when we got to the end of this project, we had enough classroom. Um, if we do not approve, Bell is down the road, um, elementary school in Darby to be determined, but if we do not approve the East Lansdowne classrooms as designated, needed, um, we perhaps would be creating the wrong building. Um, when originally, the four additional classrooms were with the project as initially presented in December of 2021, um, those classrooms were enveloped by the elevator, I'm sorry, the classrooms enveloped the elevator on the outside of the building. Um, when we said no classrooms sometime in February, uh, they moved the elevator to the inside of the building. Um, and now if we, the study says we need four more, then, uh, we should give KCBA that information as quickly as possible, because it affects bids and drawings and spec like that. Um, you know, there will be ebbs and flows as we go to this project in 10 years, um, over the 10-year period. Um, this board had no issue approving 6 million over on Kerr, you know, it's nobody's fault. But I would hate to get to the end of this project and not have enough classroom. Um, these are not an insignificant amount of classrooms, right? 14 classrooms at 25 classrooms, 25 students appeased, right? You're talking about hundreds of seats for student, um, that the Montgomery Group...
When we approved that, um, project for Kerr, there were figures there, right, wrong, or indifferent, there were figures there.
Well, the, we went from 8 million to 14 million in one meeting.
But we don't have, we don't have a figure here related to the cost of these classrooms.
We, we have the number for East Lansdowne Elementary as given to us in the early ages of this original project.
But also, in consideration with that, you have to look at, like you said, our cost for Kerr Field went from 6 to 14 with the same organization. We don't need that to also change with the classrooms, because what was quoted before may not be what we're going to receive now. So, again, I think the timing, it needs to be done in a way where we can have an accurate assessment of all of the classrooms and have an actual plan for additions, because it looks like we handpicked part of Dr. B. Coates' recommendation. We handpicked part of it, but we didn't look at all of it. And I just feel like we're doing additions to classrooms, I think we need to look at the whole plan first, and then decide as a whole plan on what buildings we're making the additions to, not just handpicking.
No, these, these were, these opinions were from the Montgomery Group, not Dr. B.
It was from the study, that was not correctly.
Correct, from the Montgomery Group.
And it recommended names for the high, we need, for the high, we need to base for the high school as well, correct?
It, it did not add classrooms to the high school, nor did it. Said our, our pressure point was at elementary school. Um, but I, I understand, and, and we can, you know, do our research on Bell and elementary school in Darby to be determined, but the East Lansdowne has implications right now, because that's the first project out, um, to do air handling and elevator. So, it would be a wasted opportunity and cost us more in the end if we approached them differently.
So, I'm just going to say that the, I, I, I want the classrooms, and I think we all sitting here want the classrooms. The biggest issue is, is that we did not know that we were going to be in the negative when we all, yes, we did all talk about this before, we talked about additions of the classrooms, we talked about being, um, um, HVAC and ADA compliant, we talked about those things. And we, at that point, we did not know, as a board, we did not know we were going to be in the negative with Kerr. I just feel that if we jump and say that we're going to move forward with this process and this project right at this moment, I'm just saying that we need to wait to see how much money we're going to get coming in before we just say, okay? Because when we say, okay, and we vote yes on D1 and D2 together, KCBA is going to move forward. So, they're going to expect some type of money coming through as well for this, this project. So, what I'm saying is, right now, we are a little in limbo. We know that we need to raise at least $5 million to help us with Kerr Field, and we did not know that, you know, Jen, prior to this, um, when we were saying, okay, and taking the tour at East Lansdowne, seeing the condition, we, we do understand that the school has to be fixed due to poor air quality. We do understand that. That was the conversation that we had about the HVAC and also, um, becoming ADA compliant. But I just feel that we should wait until we see if our grant money is going to come through, which will kind of give us a, more of a weight of understanding how much money we're have to actually use, and then also on top of that, we do need an estimate from KCBA, uh, before we move forward as well. So, I would be willing to get the estimate to see how much it is, um, but to move forward right now, I would not be willing to say we should move forward until we have that information.
And just to add transparency to where I am, I'm still having apprehensions with KCBA.
You're having apprehensions with KCBA, still. Okay.
So, you delayed the vote, okay? The construction schedule goes forward with, uh, air quality and th- those recommendations for East Lansdowne, since they're, again, first in the lot.
Okay.
Okay? You get your estimate later on, okay? Construction and, and the bid schedules have already gone out. How do you move the elevator then, okay, incurring extra construction costs and build those classrooms? The answer is that you're not going to build the classrooms, okay, until later on down the line, and you've already done all the HVAC work, you put the elevator in the wrong spot for the classrooms, and you've just moved on.
But is that a, um, Bill, is that a conversation that we can have with KCBA with regard to con- timeline? Like, I understand what you're saying about when they have to do the HVAC and, and with regard to becoming ADA compliant. It's, we can't talk about timing? That's, that's not a conversation that we can have with them, is about timing, meaning when is the lea- the least, while they're performing some of the work?
The bids are going out.
Maybe we can, maybe we'll have more money by then as well? Like, I'm just trying to look at...
That money can be utilized for Bell and the two additional, uh, classrooms in, in Ivey.
Because what I'm saying is, if we say yes to this right now, right, and we're negative five, we already know we're negative four or five, right? Now, on top of that, we're going to have to get another, we're going to have to increase our loan, right? We're going to have to go borrow another 10 million, right?
10 million for what?
Because we already took one 10 million, right? We don't know how much we're going to get in grant money, so, right now, and we already know we're at a deficit of, of negative four or five or something, so, we're going to have to go get another 10 million to be able to complete.
I don't...
That's what, that's what voters want. Let's just vote on it.
But I don't understand, and, and this is not meant to be disrespectful in any way. I, I don't understand how we can, in one meeting, say, we're 6 million over on Kerr Field, and that's okay, but if we're, but we're concerned that we're going to be over here, so let's hold. There was no hold on Kerr. There was...
There's a, the difference is, KCBA just gave us the wrong quote. It wasn't our, it wasn't our intention to be over, but if we were given an incorrect quote, that's out of our control. But this was something that we all agreed that we were going to move forward, so we moved forward with that, and we had already said we were holding on the classrooms, so we can't keep going back to Kerr Field. Kerr Field is a separate entity at this point.
We never said we were holding on the classroom.
We said we were holding on the classrooms initially.
But we didn't.
That was the whole point. You guys, the property committee added it at the last hour of the classroom addition to East Lansdowne. The previous meetings that we had, that we participated in, because board members were all there, the classroom addition was agreed to not do any classroom addition, it was agreed to do ADA compliance and HVAC. And the final, at the board meeting, it was added on, so that was...
No, it's not true. That, we discussed it in property committee, I believe, twice.
No, we were, we all attended the property. Someone correct me if I'm wrong, the last property committee meeting we had, it was to not do the classroom additions at this time, it was to focus on ADA compliance and HVAC. If anyone else can correct me, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but if anyone else, let me know.
The property meeting we had in the beginning of, I'm checking my date right now, um, last Tuesday, the 11th, correct?
I'm referencing last week, I'm referencing the meetings that we...
No, but Ms. Boykins, we had a property meeting on October 11th where this was discussed and moved forward by the committee. So, it's not last minute, it's not underhanded, it was discussed in committee like it was supposed to be on October 11th.
Okay, so, I, I heard what you just said. In one of our meetings, didn't, didn't Wadia ask for it to be tabled? Do you recall that in any meeting? That's all I just want to ask. Do you recall in any meeting where she was asking if the discussion could be tabled?
This is what I recall. Ms. Ivory asked for it to be tabled for, for research on where, where the data would suggest that we add classrooms. That data came back, we recommended what the data says we need, where the classroom should go, and those are the four classrooms in East Lansdowne, eight classrooms at Bell, and two classrooms at a school to be determined in Darby.
Okay, and then, so, she, okay, good, Ms....
She required, she requested where's the data to support the East Lansdowne classrooms. Here's the data that supports the East Lansdowne classrooms. So, this was not something that we brought up last minute, this was something that we brought up, I want to say in the spring, and the, the request was to have data back it up. The data was sought, the data came back, and this was the data that shared with where the schools, which schools should have classrooms.
Yes, and I remember her asking for the discussion to be ta- tabled, and then we were to come back and talk about the data which...
I tabled, I tabled for the data to come back for where those two classrooms should be.
We already knew where those classrooms-
With the cost, which we do still do not have.
And we don't have a cost.
And I did, I did have a discussion. My other request was also, when we spoke with Dr. B. Coats, we were looking at how we could possibly reposition programs within the school district to kind of move programs from one building to another. So we were trying to see how we could relocate as well before we make, you know, before we decided to create the addition. So taking the information of moving, relocating programs, and then once programs are relocated, then look at, okay, what is our space needed for each of those buildings?
And for, for now, I, I just want to emphasize that we do not have a cost associated with four classrooms in East Lansdown, eight classes in Bell, and two classes in Darby and location to be announced. We do not have that-
You have the initial cost that provided by KCBA for East Lansdown.
For East Lansdown.
Right, that's correct.
For East Lansdown.
And then the report came out and recommended that the other additional classrooms be located in Bell and to be determined later in Darby.
Correct. And so we do not have a figure for-
Bell and Darby.
Bell. And, and we got it from KCBA, who also gave us misinformation on cost for Kerr. That we keep hearing about, that we don't have a problem with the cost of Kerr. We do, we did, we, we were stuck with misinformation.
I'm not going to speak for or against KCBA, but construction wise, uh, Kerr Field sort of went out of whack because of what we, I guess, à la carte items. Okay, this definitely other thing, the, the initial, the initial parking lot, construction costs for classrooms are fairly fixed, brick and mortar and squares. So, uh, KCBA can still bring in the, the estimated cost, but my guess is it's going to be in line with the initial estimate from the spring, given, except for the factor of inflation. Um, what the cost will be for, uh, eight and two in three years from now, that's the best guess estimate that any engineering firm or, or firm like KCBA would, would come up with.
But, but another question I have is, why, why is that even a motion to authorize representatives from KCBA architects to develop a cost estimate? Like, shouldn't that be automatic of what they're going to do? Like, why is that even a motion?
Well, because Bell, well, I guess because Bell and the two be determined aren't finalized yet in terms of where they're actually going to be in Darby, which would be a cost associated with site A and a cost associated with site B. Okay, so until that's determined, you can, you can, you can run up an initial cost estimate. Yeah, because it's, it's less of an à la carte item with, you know, this field and that field and these features versus this sound system, where it's a square addition being built from brick and cinder block up. Okay, that, that makes it more of a fixed cost thing, where there aren't that many variables other than labor and material. Not, uh, well, we're going to have a javelin thing here and we're going to sod this or rid of that. So it's, 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 it's less à la carte and more of fixed items, brick, mortar, electrical wire, and pipe.
Well, I'm just going to say, I'm all for D2 to find out how much it's going to cost. I'm all for it and I, I would like to know how much money we do, what we will get from our grants, um, to be able to help. I already know that we have to look into Kerr, but also whatever the adjustment cost is going to be for D2 as well. Unless we're all considering taking another loan out without knowing, because that's what we're going to have to do. If we say, and that's being honest, if we say that we're going to say yes to D1, we all get together to talk about how much we're going to take out for a loan.
I have a quick question. I just have a quick question. I'm sorry. I was looking back, because Jennifer, Jennifer, you were telling me about the, um, the study. I'm looking at, so the study that we did, we're still talking about the master, the facilities master plan, correct? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right documents.
The study is from Bill Montgomery.
For, uh, in a, in alignment with the facilities master plan and Dr. P. Coats put this out for this whole project, correct?
So the master plan came out first, then the study.
Right.
Then the needed revision to classrooms.
Okay.
I can resend you the Montgomery study if you need it.
I'm just want, I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at the correct study that we're, we're going in alignment with the, the-
I think the Montgomery study was given us to, us in August.
Yeah. No, I haven't. I'm just trying to make sure that, that, that's the one that we're referring to. Okay. Thank you.
So I, just going around the room, just, you know, just so we know, um, I, I would like to get a feel, to understand, to like, um, where we're going to, oh, yeah.
Before you do that, uh, is, I'm try, I'm trying to understand what the hold office, uh, standoff. Is it, are we in favor of having the classrooms done? Or do we want to have the estimate cost in front of us before we say yes?
That's what I'm saying, Ms. Duella. I'm saying I would at least like the cost estimate to be done.
No, but what I'm saying is, do we want the classrooms? I mean, we could go back and forth, say, you know, the estimate cost is not in front of us.
I just want to say, so I, and I want to paraphrase you, but if, if the initial cost estimate, just again, that's all we have for East Lansdown, I think it was, uh, three and a half million more?
Eleven.
Okay, I'm sorry. So from eight, from eight to eleven. So if, if the KCBA does the additional estimate and says it's not three and a half, it's four and a half, are you going to say no?
No, then we'll have to figure out how to get that, that money, that's what I'm-
So construction's got to wise, East Lansdown has to move forward in the next vote.
But I, I hear what you're saying, but then it'll let us know how much money, say, we do have to borrow. Like, right now, we're in limbo because we do not have a number. That, we really don't have a number. I hear what you're saying about going with the original number. But we really, we did get incorrect, a, a incorrect estimate. So if everybody here says yes, that we want to move forward, we're saying yes blindly.
So to answer your question, Bella, the, if we wanted classrooms, I would vote for classrooms to be in all of these schools as was recommended, right? I would. But I'm not going to do that and not have facts in front of me of what it's going to cost. And I'm not going to go buy a, a car and not have, you, you know, walk away, say, I, I agree to purchase this car, and I have no idea of how much it's going to cost.
So do you want to separate East Lansdown from this based on the initial cost estimate that you do have? Is that plausible?
Yes.
But you do have-
I, I, I mean, I hear you on that.
I don't, I don't understand the, we already know that we are six million dollars short and that we have to, through grants, RCAP, or, uh, increase in taxes, or increase in borrowing, let me say, increase in borrowing, um, have to cover that amount. So we already, sitting here today, we already know that we're in the red. So-
Yes.
We, I'm sure between now and Monday, KCBA can review what they gave us about East Lansdown, um, five, six months ago, double check their numbers and have a number for us. So that would cover, um, D2 East Lansdown, and then we could add the others. But I think D1, accepting, I, and I just lost my place here, dang it. Um, accepting, uh, the superintendent's recommendation based on Montgomery is okay. Where we seem to be st- stumbling is the full breadth of D2. We can take D2 on as East Lansdown only and address the other two when we get to those drawings and costs. Correct, Mr. Tom?
You can do that.
So now, what you want to do is, you want to take and bring East Lansdown out of the, so we're going to separate this vote then. So Bell Avenue, um, and the additional classrooms of, of, uh, the elementary schools of Darby will be removed. And it will be just for East Lansdown because we do know the estimates associated with, uh, East Lansdown. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
I think that's what she was saying.
Right, so D1 would be approved because we do accept what the study told us. Um, and D2, where we commit money, would be East Lansdown for classrooms. And that could be written without, um, without motion because we just have to post it twenty-four hours ahead. We're allowed to change agendas in between meetings.
What could be written without motion?
Um, D2 can be, the wording of D2 can be changed without motion for next Monday's meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, be twenty-four hours before, yes. Sorry, I just, I misheard you. Um, the question was with, uh, KCBA, do we have the accurate numbers for the cost estimate for East Lansdown? And then Mr. Tom followed up and said, yes, we do. Um, and Bill just spoke on that as well.
And I think-
Vote yes either way. So if you want to separate East Lansdown from the, from the pack and wait for additional cost estimates for Bell and to be determined later, which I don't know when that's going to come in, I'm fine with that. If you want to move forward as written, I'm fine with that also. So, uh, I'm, I'm sort of removing myself from the equation here, but I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes either way.
Yeah.
I also think when we-
Hold on, let's do a little, one second, uh, Jen, go ahead.
But when we started out with talking about construction and of course the HVAC and ADA was the go for, first of all. That was made a statement that, I'm going to paraphrase, show me where you need these classrooms. Show me the data that's going to support your needing these classrooms. We paid us, we paid for a study to do that, and there it just seems like we are not, you know, what we have in front of us, we're not paying attention to it. I mean, we're not looking at, here's the study says we need these four additional classrooms, eight additional and two additional classrooms. But now we seem to be stuck as to, we have the data, what are we going to do with it?
And yes, but when we got, before, when we did ask for the data, we did not know at that time that we have received the incorrect information from Mid, from not Mid-Atlantic, from Miller. We did not know that, which KCBA gave us the information, which our numbers were all. You even spoke up in the meeting and stated that we would have to tack less more money on, on the people. It, it, and we didn't know that. So what I'm saying is, we made that, you're absolutely right. When we had that conversation, we were all for having additional classrooms. And then when we came back and we found out that we were in the hole, negative four plus million, that kind of changed our tone a little bit because we don't know how much we're going to get from RCAP. And yes, Jen is right. We do know that when we said yes to Kerr, we knew that we would have to raise taxes. We knew that we would have to get a loan as well.
But you keep saying raise taxes. Raising taxes is not going to pay for this. So I, I mean, taxes will go a certain-
There's three types. There's three ways to get this money.
You're talking a personal property tax?
No, well, Jen just stated, Jen, didn't you just state the three ways? What were the three ways you just stated?
Yeah, so grants, RCAP, and I, changing our borrowing. I'm not saying raising taxes because not all changing our borrowing makes us raise taxes, right? There are options to, um, the, the initial plan that we looked at, the financial plan, plan from Jamie, um, was, was more and did not have that much effect on the bottom line. So, so the bottom-
This whole time-
There's-
I, I just have to, I have to rebut on that. This whole time, you've been talking about the raising of taxes. You and I have had discussions on that. And that, and you said to me, Mo, if we go forward with Kerr, you know we're going to have to raise taxes. This whole time, you've been talking to people about it.
I understand that, Mo.
Somebody's giving us an index of tax. I, I'm agreeing with you on that, so.
I'm communicating it differently. I've changed how I'm speaking about it. Because we don't know what, we know we're going to have to change our borrowing. We do not know if that is going to filter down to raising taxes at this time. A lot of things could happen. So I'm-
Jen, I'm glad you're reading that, but I did state that in the beginning, and this is why I was very optimistic. And I said to my, I said to everybody in this room, I said, before we jump to talk about raising taxes, we have to see exactly how much money we're going to get from the grant. We're not necessarily sure. And you, you, you stated that you're-
I, but I'm talking about something different, Ms. Boykins. What I'm talking about is if we borrow more money. And so say that adds a mill in five years, we could have money, we could be funded differently by the state where it doesn't mean we have to raise taxes. We could, um, I, I'm sorry, PlanCon could come back. Um, and that would mean we wouldn't have to raise taxes. So I'm now talking about us increasing the borrowing, and we don't know the bottom line effect of that right now. So increasing borrowing, RCAP money and grants, we don't understand really a lot of that sitting here today on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. But we do-
In October seventeen, Jennifer, how much money would we be borrowing? What, what, what number would you throw at this, the, the, this project, these additional classrooms?
Um, I would probably go back to the, um, the PFM presentation we had in January and look at those numbers. Um, I don't know the answer, uh, Ms. Cook Henry. Um, expenses will fluctuate in the next, you know, five to ten years. Some will come down, some will go up. Um, but I do know that if we stay true to Dr. B. Coats' Focus Forward Plan and the facilities master plan and what our communities need, at the end of the projects, we'll have what our communities and our students need to be successful, successfully educated. And that, for me, is the most important thing right now.
Dr. B. Coats?
I just, I've just, I, I purposely been listening. Um, I see that the board has two options. You can leave the motions like they are, move it forward and vote. You can modify the motion, motions based upon what Bill said and move it forward and vote.
Yeah, I, I looked at one of those comments. So I understand that the numbers from, uh, KCBA were not as solid as well. Okay, but if they were that, if they were on target, okay, you would still be at this point now because you still don't have the numbers for, for Bell, which was based on the recommendations, and for the two be determined, which was based on the recommendations. So essentially, you would still be at the same point that we are right now.
Yes, sure. I need this to be plain for me. I don't know about anybody else, and I'm hoping that our constituents, um, understand what's going on because right now I'm confused. And if I'm confused, I'm sure there's others. I know, and because I've missed meetings and I apologize, that I have, so I need to make it plain. When we started all this talk about construction, when we even talked about a master plan, the only thing that was mentioned, just like Ms. Ivory said, was ADA compliance and HVAC. Even when I started in the beginning, like I, before Ms., when Ms. Hoff and I were the only ones that was attending these meetings, it was just HVAC and ADA compliance. Now, the last meeting I attended, we talked about adding just classrooms to, I'm sorry, adding elevators to, um, East Lansdown and Bell. Now we've moved forward to adding classrooms. And I'm confused about the motion of adding these classrooms. I'm confused at how did we get to there when we just only said we were presented with, even with Kerr, we were presented with monies. I think it was what, ten million, million dollars we were given, and then eight of it was supposed to go to Kerr, and then we were supposed to hold on some money? I'm really confused of where we are with this and, and why we're having this debate and not having a one voice. I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm confused about it. I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know why we're having this conversation because there was a master plan that we, again, Ms. Wadia is saying, we had a master plan. because there was a master plan that we, again, Ms. Wadia is saying, we had a master plan. We made a, 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 a presentation to each and every borough, their, their, their council members, and stating exactly what we were doing. There was no, we're going to add this and add that in the fourth. We borrowed $10 million, $10 million. And now we're proposing to, proposing, let me say we are, now we're proposing to add another $10 million. I'm saying that because, one, I remember being on disability and I know our seniors come in here and talk about how much we're raising the taxes on them and they don't even have kids in this district. And we're not being fiscal to our elders who can't afford these taxes that's going on. And I'm going to be their voice because I know how it was. I know how it was for me. And I know that I would not be able to afford you guys deciding to do another $10 million in a loan. Also, for the D two, I'm having a very hard problem because like I always tell people when I talk to them, I'm a social worker. I don't know nothing about this construction stuff. I don't know none of this which y'all talking about. What I do know is social work. You ask me about social work, I can tell you from A to Z about social work. KCBA, somebody tell me, when did they start their business?
They've been in business over 15 years.
Been in business over 15 years. And you're going to try to tell me that they didn't know how to present to us numbers when they've done work in Delaware County prior to us? So how are you going to tell me and straight face tell me that these people made a mistake? This is not a mistake. They know their job, just like each and every one of us knows our job. So you can't tell me that you were presented with this money not clearly saying, hmm, well, you know, we're going to charge them $8 million. $8 million doesn't sound right because we did so and so and so for another, a property or another county or another school district. So you knew, even I, and I have no idea, knew that $8 million wasn't right. So I'm trying to get a clear understanding of why, one, we're going with somebody who clearly, clearly didn't know what they're doing. So for D two, I'm out on that one. You can say, I'm, I'm definitely saying no because we need somebody that's going to be there for us and going to support us with, and financial, and I don't mean us as this board, that's about us as a school district. Supporting us in what we, our needs are and going to be there for us when it comes to this money. Because we got to be fiscally sound for people when they come and approach us and, and, and say to us, why did you vote for that? So I really would like to get some clarity on how we got all the way to making some classrooms.
In KCBA's initial presentation, okay, aside from the HVAC and ADA compliance, there were, I'll say, à la carte items in terms of recommendations to increase the classroom size in East Lansdowne, to increase, uh, put a gymnasium, we wanted Evans, um, to increase the classroom size, but also we did Evans and to put the elevator in it at Bell that we, that we asked for, okay? We moved forward with just the ADA, I'm wrong, with the ADA and the HVAC issues. Um, the, uh, classrooms in East Lansdowne, which I initially want to put into the construction schedule, were tabled back in early summer because there was questions as to whether we actually need classrooms. That study was, uh, that was done by Dr. B. Coats, that, that we recommended he do to answer that question, uh, was answered in August. The answer in August was, yes, we need the additional classrooms. So it is not some sort of shadow, uh, conspiracy to put these things in at the last minute. Now ADA or KBCA, if, if there's issues with the, the quality of their work, I, I, I know I can speak to or for that because I'm not a forensic auditor or, or an accountant, okay? But we, knowing that, okay, knowing the reservations, did you vote to move forward with cur?
I don't think I was around to vote for anything.
I'm sorry?
I don't think I was around to vote for anything.
Or that voted to move forward with cur. Oh, yeah, there may be a glitch in the system. So, you know, not, I, and, you know, you're, you're saying the KBA knew, okay? That sounds, again, to me like, yeah. Are you saying they did it on purpose?
I didn't say they were doing it on purpose. I said, what I said was knowing their job. I didn't say knowing what, and they should know what the costs are. At least estimate around how much that cost should be. When you sign a contract for a contractor, you're getting an estimated cost close to what you're paying for. You don't get no willy-nilly number like $8 million and then next thing you know, it's double when you get, when you get a contract signed for your, for home, for home repair. So this doesn't make, this is not, this doesn't make sense to me.
And security and parking lots and, and things that, that, that were a decision on our part.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah. I have, I, I have to say like, I, I'm not going to say that this is solely KCBA because.
I didn't say solely KCBA.
And I don't want it, and I don't want it to be perceived in that way.
We added the extra features, we added the security fence, we added the things that, that all added the, 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 the cost.
And also remember too that that estimate did not come from them. It came from another vendor. And they took what that vendor's estimate was and used it. So basically, remember KCBA does not do that type of work. So they used the estimate from the vendor that we were looking at and they used that information. And then when we decided to pick the vendor, we gave the information to that vendor and they came back with a higher estimate. So that's how that happened. It wasn't as if KCBA, uh, generated those numbers. They received it from a vendor that was in our selection process.
And, and Dr. B. Coats is right. You could, you could either lock East Landsdowne off and then go separate on that for type B, or you can vote on it as a whole. As, as they said, I'm going to vote yes either way, so it doesn't matter to me which way you proceed on that.
So I, I, so since you said you're going to go yes either way, um, Ms. Richardson, are you yes either way? And the reason why.
Let me, let me just comment on a question that was asked.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if our constituents ask us why we voted for, we wanted to ask those children, that kids, students that were standing out there on the steps the other week when they heard about curfew being down. Ask those students that come in here that sit in a classroom with no air conditioning. Ask those kids how they get these lands down, up and down the stairs. Ask those children, do a survey and ask them. I mean, we're going to pay property tax as long as we live.
And not only ask them, but ask their kids that aren't born yet how they want to go to school.
Because I mean, property tax has been going on for a while. That's not going to stop it to say, you know, I'm a senior. I'm a senior, I pay property tax every year, been paying for 31 years. And every year that tax bill come, if you want to live in your house, you pay your taxes. So I don't think to say that our taxes are going up and this, but ask those students that were standing out there on the step the other week.
Okay, so you're yes for D one and D two? Um, I'm not sure. You're not sure yet, uh, Mr. Tom?
I'd prefer not to say.
Okay.
Um, I'd rather do homework since I haven't missed, missed many meetings, I need to do homework.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to progress us into a, a preliminary vote.
Well, I, I, it's not more of a preliminary vote. I was just wondering what page, where we on the same page because it, it's important for us to understand what everyone's issues are, our holdups are. So I'm not taking a vote now, I was just wondering where they lie with her.
You're certainly taking the temperature of the room.
Yeah, basically.
But, but again, you know, so I mean, again, the only real issue is whether you split, put the baby here or you vote on it in full Monday night, that's really the only issue left. And, and, and what steps probably went?
Understandable. Um, Jen, um, I'm pretty sure you're okay with D one, D two. Um, Ms. I.
For herself.
Yeah, she went off of mute, you're all muted now, you can talk.
Um, I, I'm gonna, um, hold my vote close for now, thank you.
Okay, uh, Wadia? Do you have anything you have to say, anything else about D one and D two?
I'm not comfortable, um, voting on, on this at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that. And, um, I have not spoken to, uh, Mr. Rintinex, I don't know where he falls. But, um, I just say thank you very much because it's important for us to understand what our issues are, that are pros and cons about these, this vote. So when it comes down to next Monday, uh, we kind of know where we fall. So thank you for that and thank you for having a healthy discussion. Uh, moving on to, um, E, our Budget and Finance Committee Agenda, going to be read by, uh, Ms. Jen Howe.
Thank you, Ms. Boykins. Uh, E one, Treasurers Report, E two, List of Bills. Um, look for a budget meeting, uh, before the end of the year. Um, so we can approve our act number in January as mandated.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? All right, going to F, our Policy Committee, read, um, read by Ms. Julie Hopkins, our chair.
Um, the second reading of amended policies, 805 and 808. Yeah, the motion is to approve the second reading and adopt the adoption of the, uh, William Penn School District amended policies, 805 and 808, and to enter such readings into the minutes. F two, first reading of new and amended policies, number two thirty, thirty-six point one, um, six ten point one and eight oh five point two. The motion is to approve the first reading of the William Penn School District new amended policies, two three six one, six one zero one and eight oh five point two, and enter such readings into the minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the Policy Committee Agenda? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Uh, Board Directors, next Monday, uh, just please make sure, like, if you have a report that you want to give about any activities, uh, you've been a part of. I know a lot of you've been out traveling at different schools.